Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Alderman Lord is excused. Alderman Dukneak?
Here.
Alderman Toman is excused. Alderman Gale?
Here.
Kuzakowski?
Here.
Everybody, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Bridget, would you lead us, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please take a look at the minutes of 1/7/20. There's no errors, corrections, questions, comments? Motion.
Kuzakowski will make a motion to approve the minutes of January 7, 2020.
Next second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Dukneak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item number four is consideration of proposed amendment in municipal code regarding permits, uses, conditional uses for the planned unit development in a B6 interchange regional retail zoning district.
Public hearing number one is to consider proposed amendments to section 17.0316 of the municipal code regarding permitted uses, conditional uses, and planned unit developments in the B6 interchange regional retail zoning district. Date of notice is December 18, 2019. Sorry about that. Date of notice is December 18, 2019.
Doug?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Doug Seymour, Director of Community Development for O'Kreek. This is a public hearing and I request to amend section 170316 of the municipal code relating to the B6 interchange regional retail zoning district. The original B6 zoning district was created in 2016 in support of the development of the IKEA store and surrounding properties. And while that district allowed for many different permitted and conditional uses, it did not establish specifically a conference center as either permitted or conditional. So that kind of sets the pretext as far as where we are today. And as all you are aware, the city has been entered into agreement for it will allow for the construction of two hotels and a conference center on the land south of IKEA. And that land was in or is in the B6 interchange regional retail zoning district and also is the subject of a future public hearing on a planned unit development designation. But in order to have those types of uses allowable as part of the PUD, they also must be allowed in the base zoning district. So hence, some changes were required to the B6 zoning district. And this specifically calls out conference centers as a permitted use. It takes hotels out of the realm of the conditional use, brings those into the, as a permitted use in the base zoning district as well. It also allows uses incidental, hotels such as the restaurant, the bar, fitness facilities, and meeting rooms. Just to provide some clarity that those two are permitted or would be permitted in the B6 zoning district, as well as coffee shops, which would include or could include potentially a drive-in and drive-through facilities with the caveat that no additional, no alcoholic beverages may be sold or dispensed to any drive-through or drive-through facilities. And they also must have indoor dining areas attached to them. Allows for, calls out for allowing multifamily dwellings at densities of up to 50 dwelling units per net acre, provided that any multifamily unit, building of 20 units or more shall have at least three stories in height and shall have at least one other use other than dwelling units on the first floor. This envisions or allows for the potential to have some more urban type multifamily in there and some mixed-use buildings similar to what you see at Drexel Town Square, but there's no specific plan for that. It just sets the stage and allows the base zoning to allow that as permitted use. Again, allows conference centers and banquet halls of not less than 5,000 square feet and no more than 50,000 square feet. Allows for grocery stores, neighborhood food stores, sporting goods stores, family entertainment centers such as indoor amusement parks, indoor theme parks, play zones, indoor mini golf courses, bowling alley, and family fun centers. Revised some language where hotels were conditional uses there and the original zoning ordinance, they're being moved to, again, permitted. That section regarding the conditional use is deleted. Also has some languages with respect to PUDs in the district in that they don't need to be in single control or ownership as long as, I mean, there's obviously going to be an ownership structure and a maintenance structure, but our PUD ordinance requires that they be in single control or ownership. That is not the case or would not be the case if this amendment were passed. And finally, it does allow for the planning commission approval of, allows for the flexibility in some of the dimensional or architectural requirements and landscaping standards under the chapter. Again, as is the case in some of the many things with the site planning and architectural view, it allows for planning commission review and approval with a three-quarters majority. Those are the changes to the zoning district or the proposed changes to the B6 interchange regional retail zoning district. Again, they're allow for the flexibility, provide some clarity with respect to the proposed development of the hotel and conference center, as well as establishing district standards for the development of the remainder of the site. This being a public hearing, again, anyone with any questions, comments regarding the proposed changes, please approach the microphone, give your name, address, and proceed to address your comments or questions of the common council. This public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call for the public hearing. Second call on the public hearing. Third and final call, anybody wishing to speak on item four. Now close the public hearing and move on to five, which is consideration of the ordinance amending that municipal code we just spoke of. Open it up to the council. Questions, comments? Ken?
Thanks, Mayor. I noticed there wasn't, I get the impression not a whole lot of conversation in that planning, it seemed, from the minutes?
No. It was pretty standard.
Pretty straightforward stuff.
Stuff as we're going forward in that B6 district. It was probably more explanation of why we created B6 district.
Yeah. Good. Doug, can you give me a little background? Where else is B6 in the city?
The area around the Drexel Town Interchange on the west side, that is the only place at this point.
Only place in the city is B6 and just the property south of IKEA?
It is the IKEA property as well as the properties to the south.
Okay.
Not including the single-family home that's there.
Yeah, understandable. The clause there on the multifamily required a first-floor use other than residential?
Sure. I mean, the...
If in an entity, whether they do three floors, a completely multifamily, that can require a conditional use permit or how, is that possible or how would they?
I don't think that'd be possible, but I think that this was designed in a manner such that, you know, we don't want to necessarily duplicate what's at Drexel Town Square or some of the concepts might be like that. So it allows for, for instance, if you were going to have a fitness room or something that's commonly, or like a package pickup or something that's commonly available in many multifamily projects, you have those types of uses on the first floor just to activate that level. That would be the concept rather than just having four floors of multifamily.
Understandable. Is there a likely in your planning realm, another spot in the city that would potentially eventually look at a B6 designation?
Based on the pending comprehensive plan, I don't believe that there's another area that would qualify for that. Certainly, if for some reason the commission, the community, the council felt that the area around Elm Road at some point in time might be an appropriate candidate for that, that'd be the case, but right now, no.
You had mentioned one thing just before you closed your comment. The planning commission, if they had three-quarters majority vote, what was that statement?
Yeah, I mean, right now in our site and architectural standards, it allows for the planning commission to modify any of those standards by a three-quarters majority vote of any of the people present at the meeting.
Anyone else? No, no. Doug, just very quickly, are medical uses, and I mean, nature of like physical therapy places, are those allowed or fitness?
I believe that they are, but let me just verify that for you.
Sorry about that.
Specifically permitted uses?
Okay.
Or is this purely retail?
Okay. And then, just standard question, do things in that district, do bars, restaurant constitute establishments like we see at, like in Drexel Town Square, Water Street, are they considered a manufacturer of their beer product or like if a tasting room went in there?
No, I'd consider that principally a retail operation. Certainly, there's a line that exists someplace when something becomes more of manufacturing operation, but the types of businesses that we're envisioning at Creek Side Crossing Marketplace typically would not fall into that category. I mean, if there were a substantial manufacturing operation in conjunction with that, that would not be the appropriate location.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Ken?
Obviously, we, property owner, we're working with this investment in conjunction with the property owner's desires.
Yes, correct.
Okay. No other questions? Motion on five, please.
Gale, move to approve ordinance 2962 amending section 17.0316 of the municipal code regarding permitted and conditional uses within the B6 interchange regional retail zoning district.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Item six pertains to the information of the fourth quarter actual report on the budget. So we have Bridget with us to report on that.
Good evening. I know everybody's been waiting for this all year. It's your budget to actual report for 2019 through the fourth quarter. As you are accustomed to with this presentation, you're going to see some charts and graphs showing our estimates for the year-end. So keep in mind, and I will say this more than once, these are estimates. We still have about a month of year-end journal entries that we'll be working on that will adjust some of these numbers, but the message is still a very positive message for the general fund as well as all of the other major funds that we will be reviewing tonight. Diving right into the general fund, as you see in all of these charts throughout the presentation, your green is going to be the 2019 year-to-date and your blue columns will be your 2019 budget. So general fund revenues came in at 105% and expenditures at 92%. Perfect scenario, right? What we want to be able to see as we go through our process each year. Diving into the revenues by category, our property taxes, fed on at 100%, which we would expect to see. Other taxes are at 115%. That's one of those year-end journal entries. All of the room tax is currently sitting in the general fund, so we need to move out the remaining to Fund 31, our CDA, and to the Tourism Commission. And our shared revenues came in at 99.8, just about there. Looking at the other governmental section at 46%, we still expect one larger payment from the school district for the SRO officers. So those normally lag into January and then that will right-size, get up to 100%. License and permits, 252%. Don't forget that on January 2, 2019, we received that $1.2 million check from Amazon for their building permits. So if you would take that Amazon payment out, our building permits would still have been over budget by $60,000. So I wanted to look at that variance and let you know we're still budgeting conservatively and that the activity is still going strong and steady in Oak Creek. Charges for services, 96%. Public health and safety, 65%. It really isn't a ton in terms of dollars. The percentage looks like, it feels skewed to me because it's minimal for dollars. But again, that's journal entries for year-end. Chamber lease, spot on. Commercial revenues, that's mainly our interest income, which we will have to move some of that out and spread it across our other funds evenly. And this is transfers and our revenue offset that we budget for, which naturally we don't need the revenue offset because our income was, will cover everything that we had for expenses. So just a few transfers we'll see here in the next month. Moving to general fund expenditures by category. General government, 90%. Public safety, 94%. Health, 71%. 92% public works, 97%. Leisure services, which is your library and recreation. Everybody's under 100%, exactly what we want to see as a group. Taking it one layer deeper, looking at each department or division, everybody did really good this year. I know we still have a couple entries to make. Some of them will increase expenses and others will decrease expenses. One to note is the fire department, where we will have expenses coming out along with the police department going into Fund 19. So if you remember, we allocate, we allocate a percentage of each of their budgets into Fund 19. That happens at year-end. Unfortunately, for Mike's sake right now, that money is still there, which puts him at over 100%, but don't hold it against him. It's not his fault. We still have the journal entries to do. He called very concerned today, so I just want to make sure it's not Mike's fault. When we look, you're right. When we look at the major funds, we're looking at the revenue here for solid waste. We Energies, the health insurance fund, EMS, and dispatch. Again, everybody's just about at that 100% mark, which is great. In the EMS fund, we continue to see the increase in our revenue coming in from EMS, which we budgeted for, but it's always happy when you see the calls increase and you see the revenue correspond with that. Looking at the expenditures of those funds, everybody's under 100%. Again, you see We Energies down at 40%. That's because I haven't booked those journal entries that will increase closer to 100%. And really, nothing to worry about in our major funds, either on the revenue side or the expenditure side. It's a pretty ideal year. Just looking at our utilities and fuel, again, we've had some conservative years here with our electric bills and natural gas and a very conservative year with fuel. Just remember that we don't budget and adjust our fuel year after year. We just try to even out so that we don't go up and down with the spikes of the gas prices. So we'll probably maintain our budget level going into 2021 as well. So all the same stuff that we've already noted, we've got year-end journal entries, which will affect our revenues and expenses and virtually all of the funds at this point. Fire department and EMS and We Energies will all even out. And even after all the journal entries are done, we're still anticipating a little over $1 million that we would be set to add in the general fund with a surplus. So positive year. Any questions?
Thank you, Bridget. Questions? Comments? Steve Rich?
My comment that I have, Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District, is obviously we're operating very efficiently, so thank you to, I guess, all of the departments, department heads, and finance for incredibly good budgeting. But that's the way you like to see it, under budget on expenses and over budget on revenues. So that's a great thing.
Chris? I agree with Alderman Dukneak. This is great on paper, but what really makes it great is people that brought it there. They know their jobs, they ran efficiently. We put together a budget and they meet it. And that's pretty amazing when you can put that out there and be that close. Kudos to all our employees, department heads that made this happen. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item seven. Consideration of a resolution approving the 2021 Oak Creek Marketing Magazine Service Contract. Leslie?
The city, oh, thank you, city's communication coordinator. As you know, the Oak Creek Current Magazine is one of our, one of several successful communication channels that we utilize. We are beginning our fifth year, this year, of producing the magazine for the residents and businesses in our community. The issue's mailed in March, May, August, and November every year. We've established a pretty good schedule and rhythm with our production. The magazine reaches all the residents and businesses via mail. We also make sure that our advertisers and high-traffic areas receive a stack of them to hand out as well. So there's many ways that people in our community can access that magazine, and it's also put on our city website for others to view if they would like. Current number of magazines that are mailed is 16,800. Another 1,800 magazines are out for distribution on foot. And since the magazine launched in 2016, our per-issue investment has remained the same. It's been at $2,500 per issue and it will remain that rate this year. And that, our contribution goes towards the upfront costs, including postage and photography that's required for the magazine. The advertisers basically pay for the rest of the production. The only real significant change to this year's contract is that we have decided to create a two-year contract instead of a one. We feel like we've reached, again, a really good rhythm of the production process with our stakeholders and the publisher and because nothing else has really changed, it seemed like a good fit to move it to a two-year contract. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions for Leslie? Steve? Rich?
No question, just comment. I mean, incredibly good tool to convey information about our community to the residents of our community. As much as we would like to believe that online services and website, I mean, certainly it is probably the preferred method for a particular demographic, but the older you get, the more you like to have that piece of information in your hand. And really, I've gotten nothing but positive comments since the publication came out on what a good tool this is to, again, just simply convey information. So typically, there shouldn't be between the city's website and this incredible publication can't be the excuse of residents to say, "Well, I didn't know that was going on in our community." So a great tool.
Thank you.
Ken?
Rich took the words out of my mouth.
I would agree, and I agree with Leslie 100%. We're in a good rhythm. There's no reason not to do this as a two-year contract, so it's not like it's going away. If no other questions or comments, motion.
Gale, move to approve Resolution 12129-012120 approving the 2020-2021 Oak Creek Marketing Magazine Services Contract.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Dukneak?
Aye.
Item eight is consideration of a motion to approve the license agreements with CSAC, the Society of European Stage Authors and Composers, BMI Broadcast Music, Inc., and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music by licensed performers. All right, Catherine, go.
This is just a routine invoicing that we are required to have our music licenses for our entity. Pretty self-explanatory. We've done this yearly for quite some time, if you have any questions.
Any questions concerning any of those contracts? And this is something we do every year, use for phones and things like that.
Anywhere in a public space.
Yeah. Motion on eight.
Gale, move to approve the license agreements with CSAC, BMI, and ASCAP for the rebroadcast of music licensed performers.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Dukneak?
Aye.
Toman? Oh, Gale.
Aye.
Item nine is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor's appointment of Janine Hibbler to the Police and Fire Commission. So if you would take a look at Janine's resume, and any questions, you can, I guess you can direct at me.
Thanks, Mayor. Janine looks to have a great record of service and looks to be a great addition to Police and Fire Commission. With that said, I will move to concur with the mayor's appointment of Janine Hibbler at 6585 South Crane Drive to the Police and Fire Commission to file a term, fill a five-year term vacancy expiring 2021.
Kuzakowski, you'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski?
Aye.
Dukneak?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Kuzakowski?
Aye.
Item 10 is for Public Works and it's consideration of a motion to purchase replacement equipment for Riverton Meadows Park. And, one of the time we're taking up, so we have Ted with us.
This one and the one right after item number 11 are pretty much the same different parks. These are projects, this project is approved CIP project for 2020. Actually, it came in slightly under budget and we're actually hoping to do a little work on the project and possibly even add a little bit of extra to the pictures that are shown with your packet. With the old, I did include it in here because I think it's kind of neat. Our park supervisor, Jeff Went, at a conference, met up with some people that are kids around the world. Our intention is to try to donate the equipment from both of the parks to kids around the world. They specialize in establishing parks in poverty-stricken communities around the world. So our old park equipment will go somewhere to somebody else in need and they'll fix it up. And from what I'm told, they'll send us probably a letter of thank you and a picture of our old equipment somewhere in some country, you know, that couldn't afford it. So again, like I was saying, this first one is for Riverton Meadows. And we actually looked at three different purchasing consortiums that bid the items that we were looking for and we obviously selected the lowest one and are working with Gerber Play or leisure products, which we've worked with in the past, and they've done really good work for us.
Questions for Ted?
Yeah, Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District, and this may have been discussed during budget meetings, but what methodology is used to determine when the playground equipment is to be replaced? I mean, is it stuff that bad of shape? Are there resident or constituent input?
Well, actually, these are mostly recommendations from our park supervisor. These pieces of equipment are over 20 years old and one of the problems is, we have problems getting replacement parts for them. And, you know, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't call them unsafe. They do a very good job maintaining them, but like I'm saying, we have trouble finding parts for them. And so sometimes we have to even take pieces away because we can't get new parts for them.
Okay. Good enough. Thanks, Ted.
I was just going to mention, we did talk about this just a couple weeks ago at the Parks and Rec Committee meeting in both parks. Everyone was just... Parks and Rec Committee meeting, and both parks, everyone was just in favor of what was presented tonight, so.
Just a quick question, Ted. Does the play surface change? It's hard to tell by the pictures, has that become that rubber?
Unfortunately, we would have loved to have put the port-in-place play surface, but it would have doubled the cost almost of the, so, yeah, so, these will be wood chips. We'll actually take out the old chips and put new ones in, the new equipment.
Going forward, is there any consideration to have equipment that's accessible for handicap children?
Actually, this was discussed at the parks meeting, and we do have a couple of pieces in here that are accessible for kids with special needs. It's certainly not like a Calus Park, but that's a very specialized one. Both of these are neighborhood parks, and although we do try to put things in there that kids with special needs, it is by no means like a specialty park for them, but we do take that into consideration.
Good to hear.
Yeah, in fact, on one or both of them, we actually swapped out some of the equipment to accommodate the special needs concerns.
Good to hear, very good to hear. No further questions, motion on 10.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to accept the purchase of replacement playground equipment for Riverton Meadows Park from Gerber Leisure Products, $74,094.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 11 is consideration of a motion to replace the playground equipment at Manor Marquette Park, as Ted had previously mentioned. Ted?
Pretty much, I mean, very similar to the item before, slightly larger. There's some photos or actually concept drawings of it in your packet. This one, I think, is kind of interesting, it's kind of dome-looking, they call it a crab, crab crawler structure, and I believe it's the first one in the state of Wisconsin. So, actually, kind of neat.
I think you and I aren't going to climb on anything, Ted.
No, I won't, I won't be on it, no.
Any questions for Ted? No. Seeing none, motion.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to approve the purchase of replacement playground equipment for Manor Marquette Park from Gerber Leisure Products, $118,000, $792,000.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Okay. Item 12 is engineering and its consideration of a motion to award the Nicholson Road Culvert Replacement Project to the lowest responsible bidder, Musson Brothers. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, yes. Council may recall that this project was put out for advertised for public bid last spring, and for a variety of reasons, we ended up getting just one bidder. That bid was over our estimate, and so the recommendation to council and the action that followed was that the bid was rejected, and we would go out to bid late in 2019, kind of a time when construction season was wrapped up for many contractors, and that thus they might be looking for work secured in 2020. So we wanted to get better prices, and we wanted to get more bidders, and as you can see on the council report, we got eight bids, and we are recommending Musson Brothers as the low bidder to do the work, they have done work in the city in the past, and are a reputable contractor, and we are, you know, significantly below the one bid that we received last spring when we advertised.
Questions for Mike concerning the Culvert?
Like, just, you know, what was the entry estimate on the project?
It was, I believe it was like 185,000, and then the one bid we got last year was in the 25,000 range.
And what timing, Mike, when do you think this, full road closure, partial road closure?
Yeah, I mean, it's good, the road is going to be closed probably a couple of times throughout the project, based, you know, based on what the work is happening that day or those days, but we don't expect an extended closure, and those times when our clothes, we would detour the traffic rounds, which means Oakwood to McGraw, McGraw to Meadowview and down, you know, we will inform the property owners about the project and that the need for the, you know, the short-term detours.
Do we give the contractor any, you have to operate, really up to them when they want to?
It's the, you know, it's the no sooner than 7:00 AM starting time.
I've talked 10 of the year.
Oh, I don't have that information in front of me, but I, you know, generally what we would say is, you know, you're not starting before school is out and wrap it up before school is back in, so we're not impacting people getting to school and the buses.
Okay, any other questions? If none, motion on 12, please.
Gail, move to approve the award to the Nicholson Road Culvert Replacement Project to the lowest responsive bidder, Musson Brothers, at the estimated cost of $155,665.52.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
And item 13 is our licensing committee, I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kuzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I assume everybody's had an opportunity to review the common council report prior to the meeting tonight. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Hey, seeing none? Kuzakowski, make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the January 21st, 2020 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 14 is our vendor summary report, ending January 15th, 2020. If you would, please take a look, and any questions, just direct it to the appropriate person who can provide the best answer. Never know what department it's going to.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, Kristen, our destination marketing specialist, wanted me to share for item 15, that Tourism Commission is working with Music on the Move to provide the pop-up ice rink on February 14th and Saturday, February 15th. The ice rink will be set up in the center of Drexel Town Square and include free skate rentals. 14th is Valentine's Day, so we'll be running a special in Drexel Town Square with restaurant specials, lit-up ice sculptures, ice skating, and a DJ. And then Saturday is Winter Fest, so.
Something new that we have not done there, so looking forward to that, thank you.
Here, I have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Steve.
Nothing serious. Bridget and probably Ted, item seven. Remind me, how many vehicles are we leasing and how is the project working? I, this may be outside the scope of the paying the bill, but since it's on the bill, it'd be nice to know, I think. The Enterprise, the truck rental?
Currently, we're leasing 14 vehicles, and we actually have 11 more that are going to come online in 2020. That'll about wrap it up, we might have a couple of more vehicles out there, but that covers a considerable amount of the vehicles that would replace the, like, the medium and small vehicles in Public Works.
Thank you. And number 17 is probably, Mike, I don't recall, what's in that landfill? Is it just general? General stuff? I mean, it's not the garbage and stuff, it's like building materials, I understand, and stuff? Yeah, this is, this was the, yeah, the landfill operated a long time ago, and there is just the ongoing obligation to monitor the, the wells that they have in place, yes. That's the one by the church there? Correct. Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? If none, motion.
Gail, move to approve the January 15th, 2020 Vendor Summary Report in the combined total amount of $1,348,626.9 cents. Of that totals, $801,569 will impact the 2019 fiscal year, the remaining amount, $547,125.40 will impact the 2020 fiscal year.
Kuzakowski, I'll second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
That'll get us to adjournment. Before we go, I'd like to thank department heads that came out, our employees, Ricky's here again, our IT guy, Tim, and of course, everybody at the front desk that does such a fabulous job for us to get us through this. Appreciate that. Motion to adjourn.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to adjourn.
Dukenyak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.